Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting together for November 30th, 2022. Start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Warrants have all been signed. We have an agenda.
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the agenda, approve the agenda.
Hold on a second.
On favor? Okay, we have an agenda. Minutes?
Minutes. That's what I'm looking through right now. Make a motion to accept October 26th, November 2nd, and November 16th.
Hold on a second.
All in favor? Okay. Jennifer, Town Administrator's update.
The first one is just informational that there will be a, planning board is holding a public hearing on Thursday, December 15th, to discuss conditional use for lakeside storage located at 55 Red Gate Lane. Next is to inform the public, and I've asked the board in emails during the week, that December 7th, we were scheduled to close for half a day because we have the new insurance company coming down. Were required to allow her to meet with all the different employees and make sure they understand the plans. I thought that it would be a good day to use the morning for some required training that's required by state law. So we'll be going over the personnel policy. We'll be doing sexual harassment classes, some other HR classes that are required.
Very good.
So we'll be doing that on December 7th. It's a Wednesday. The transfer station and town hall will be closed all day.
Okay.
We've scheduled them in the past on off days and, you know, it's difficult to get, you know, to force them here on an off day.
I think with enough notice, that's fine.
The website RFP, we're looking for permission to extend it to December 21st. Apparently, when people put together website RFPs, they actually like to take some extensive time to develop a trial website. So we've had a couple of companies ask for a little more time. So it's good that we're getting some interest in it, so December 21st.
How many companies have expressed interest?
At least two.
Okay, great.
And we've reached out again to some other towns and sent them, since we haven't gotten anything back, we sent them actual copies of the RFP. Some of the neighboring towns that seem to have some nice sites, so. Next is an email that we received, request from Warren and Finance, just an update to the board, that the Warren and Finance is requesting the following information, a budget versus actual detailed report showing all lines of the budget, what was budgeted, the amount, and what's been expended so far, wages and benefits paid to date for each employee, including stiping positions, a wage survey from main municipal, which we need to talk about at some point because I showed you how that worked, job description for all town employees that have one, and the number of people that have insurance and what the total cost is.
I had a chance, I got a copy of that. I don't know if it came directly from you, Dennis.
Yeah, it did.
I think it did. As I mentioned at the last couple of meetings, I think we clearly are behind in terms of our accounting. And in particular, we still don't have an audit to share with you. That means that we haven't put in carryforward balances. The budgets are not in. So Dennis, most of what's on that list, we're not going to be able to provide for you for your next meeting. It's just simply not available and there's no way we can get it done. So what I would like to do, if you're gonna, you have a meeting scheduled for?
12th.
The 12th?
It's Tuesday.
Yep.
If you'd like, I'll come to that meeting and I'd like to talk to your committee about what it is you're trying to achieve. So that I can better understand that. And given our state of affairs and our limited sort of capacity to respond, see if we can't work out something that will get you what you need in a timeframe that works for you, but doesn't, you know, overburden the town hall. So we'll, we'll try to work through that and I'm sure we can come to an accommodation. Fair enough? Okay, very good.
December meetings is the board intending to meet all of the Wednesdays in December. So Christmas actually falls on a Sunday this year. So town hall and transfer, town transfer station will be closed on the 25th. Policy doesn't close it on the 24th, Christmas Eve. Town hall will have regular hours by the looks of everything. But what about your meeting schedules? Are you intending to meet the Wednesday before and after?
As of right now, I mean, we may change that if there's not much on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Other than that, I'm assuming we'll meet.
Okay. Next is a follow-up. You mentioned the auditor. David, you and I have a Zoom class, a Zoom class, a Zoom meeting scheduled on next Thursday with Ron at 6 o'clock to see if we can make some headway.
Very good.
Trio training. Tom and I talked about possibly having somebody from Trio come down so that he could really get a better sense of what the budgetary modular had to offer and what, you know, how, how it was written, how the program was written in type, in regards to what type of reports we could really get out of it as far as these financial statements and things that, you know, not only we need, but other committees may need. So looking at a four-hour training class, travel time, mileage, and so forth, $14.90 is what they're looking for. So the question is, do you want me to schedule it?
Who would be in this? Treasurer, of course.
You mean the treasurer is my thought.
Fine.
And of course, the selectmen.
Anyone else who, other selectmen want to be there, that would be fine. I, so four hours for basically $1,400?
Yeah, well, they, I mean, the training and support is only $800. It's the travel time.
Travel time, yeah.
Mileage.
What's that from Augusta?
Uh, no, they're in Bangor.
Bangor? I'm sorry?
It's a long ways.
Yeah, it's a long ways. I don't think we have any option. That number doesn't surprise me. I'm sure we have the money for it?
Yes.
Okay.
There's something, I mean, honestly, you really gotta do.
Yeah, we gotta do, or else we're not gonna get, yeah, we gotta do it.
All right, sign that. I'll get scheduled.
Make a motion or anything, just sign it? Just sign it, I guess. What else you got?
Okay, so last thing. So Kim came to me at the end of last week's meeting and asked me, as I understand, she had a conversation with someone, asked me about the whole five-member select board that passed at the November referendum, and asked me how I interpreted it being put into place. I gave her what I, what was my opinion. It was different than the petitioners, as I understand it, so we sent it to Legal. And Legal's response was, let me, let me lay out how I believe it's gonna happen. So, so the article said, "To see if the town will vote to increase the current number of selectmen, successor, and overseers of the poor from its current number of three elected persons to five elected persons," key words, "over the next two years. In 2023, two selectmen will be elected. In 2024, two selectmen will be elected. In 2025, one selectman will be elected." And continuing with three term, three-year terms. So the way that I saw it is that we currently have three seats. We have David, who is elected in June of '22, to go to June of '25. We have Tom, that was elected in June of '21, that goes to June of '24. And we have Kim, who's seat three, June of 2020 to June of '23. So in order to follow the petition to, in 2023, to elect two seats and to do this over the next two years, in 2023, seat three and what we're calling seat four will be elected. So those are the two that will be elected.
Seat four is new.
Seat four is new.
And then the following?
And in 2024, the petition says two selectmen will be elected. So we're electing, '24 is gonna then be Tom's term, and seat five. So then we're gonna do that. And then to follow up with the position, with the petition, one selectman will be elected in 2025. Yes, that's gonna be David, because that's what he originally came due. So the only way that this can happen, to follow the petition going over the next two years and following that plan, is how it's broken down. So main municipal's response was, "Dear Jennifer, I think the way you have displayed the process below explains it very nicely. The article, as I read, intends for there to be five members on the select board over the next two years, not just next year. One additional select board member will be elected in 2023, a second in 2024. I don't think the article allows for both seats to be elected next year, which would require three members to be elected in 2023. It would not be consistent with the second sentence in the article." So that's from Rebecca at Legal. So that's how we're intending.
How did they think it was gonna happen?
I, I didn't have a conversation. They went to Kim, so I'd ask, I'd defer to her on that.
My understanding was that obviously if I was running again, my, you know, my seat's up. But then the other two, the two new ones would be done. There'd be three of us, you know, three seats coming up in June. So, yeah. But that wasn't, okay.
I mean, that's, we asked.
We don't normally do it during your report.
That's my last item.
Any, any public comment, any question about this?
So basically, would you like me to get up?
Yes.
If you have a comment, please do.
The only reason that this, this was even brought up is I asked Kim whether or not she was gonna run again, that's all. If she is going to run again, and as per the petition, then two selectmen should be, two additional selectmen would be elected in June as well. If she's not gonna run, then we've got three selectmen seats.
Hold on.
But that's.
Hold on. If I understand this correctly, there will be an election in June.
Correct.
And there will be two seats on the ballot.
Regardless of whether she runs or not.
There will be two seats on the ballot.
Correct. Now she.
Kim may choose to run for that, one of those, she may not. And one of them will be an open seat that will be elected for the first.
Okay, so I see how you're interpreting. It's fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, and council is basically.
I don't, I don't wanna hear about main municipal and their council. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. I think the mat is closed.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, they needed to be staggered. That's, that's.
Well, they won't be staggered. You'll still have.
Well, no, I know that now, but when I was talking to Roland, I was like, to me, it didn't, you know what I mean? I was thinking it needed to be staggered. That's why I asked the question.
But if you elected, just for the sake of, if you play it out on paper, if you elected both of the new ones next year and hers, you're gonna end up with a six-member board eventually, because the following year, you have to elect two. It says two in 2024. So then you're gonna have a six-member board.
Sounds like, sounds like whoever made up the petition confused themselves because they obviously couldn't figure out, we're not gonna have them all done at once.
The implication is, though, that, and I don't know what this, we'll have four selectmen next year.
That's correct.
So we could have a, a tie on a vote.
Tie votes fail.
So it fails. So, but that's, that's the way it's been written. We're gonna accept that. That's the result. And hopefully, we don't have one of those, but Lord knows.
So they could, they could have written the petition to, for the next election, to elect two new select board members. That would have been simple. With the remainder and one up two.
I think the key is, is that it said by 2025, so that was.
Well, okay, I, I think the mat is closed and, okay. Anything further?
No, sir.
Okay. Department Head Committee Chair updates. Dennis, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, great. I'm looking around the room. You're the only one here, so. Liaison updates. Warrant Finance Committee, I'll be attending your next meeting. Transfer Station, there were, there was a fire, was it Monday?
Sunday, yeah, Monday and Tuesday morning.
Monday, and, and it happened again this morning?
Yes.
This morning?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm sorry.
It started again. So we've had, in a brush pile. And after the first fire, I think Will came in and spread it out. Thought that would, in the fire department show, must have doused it down.
I can see. He brought the escalator down, spread it out, but they've, Robert said they put 4,000 gallons of water on it, so.
I don't know how it started again. I'm not sure. So we'll have to keep an eye on it.
Yes.
But there was no indication that there was any sort of foul play here or malicious intent. It just, you know, exactly what got in that pile and how it got started, we don't know. We'll keep an eye on it and.
Well, bark, bark piles have a tendency to combust.
They heat up, right?
Really, really hot, and whether or not that might, might have been part of the problem.
Okay.
Hopefully, this rain will.
Fire Department, I'm gonna, I guess, I'm gonna try to set the meeting with Wayne for my next office hours, which are probably gonna be in two weeks.
14th.
The 14th. So I'll have a chance to talk to Wayne, find out what his agenda is and any other issues he wants to talk about. Capital Improvement Committee, they had a meeting scheduled for.
Monday.
For Monday, and I understand Joyce is not feeling well and is canceled. And we wish her well and hopefully she'll get well soon. That's all I have.
All right. We went to the rec committee meeting on Monday and went through the agenda. They got their permit back for the parking lot, so it's kind of, the ball's in our court now as far as, you know, the next step there. We're getting ready for basketball, cheering. Tree lighting is this Saturday, four to seven here.
This Saturday, okay.
Saturday, yep. What else? They were looking for help to get the lights on the tree. So I don't know if anybody.
Looking for a boom truck like they were before.
Something, yeah. I told him to, you know, maybe call Mr. Whitman, just, you know, but, yeah, I, you know.
Last year, we banged and got one, but I don't, he, I don't think he's available.
Mr. Bartel said he would, he would. John.
Oh, Botel? He's got one?
Well, no, he would help if.
I might have a couple ideas, but, yeah. But I'll, I'll, I'll ask them before I put their name out there.
And I think she was.
Last year, we put their name out there and they fell off the gate. And they did do it. They did do it.
Well, we could shame them into it, right?
Yeah, we did. We shamed them into it.
You know, and I think she was gonna talk with Will about, you know, the poor trees are probably gonna be falling over today.
Hopefully, there's some sand in come morning.
Tied down too.
Yeah, we don't wanna have what happened earlier, remember that?
Snap.
Snap, bump the tree off. I don't think that would have, that was pretty bad.
That was a good ice storm.
Yeah.
What else is going on? I think that's, you know, that's about it for now with them. They're moving along all ice skating rink. I think they were getting a new liner. They were talking about getting a new liner. And getting that together and be nice. Boy, skating again this year. I think that's a great thing that they, they put up there years ago.
And while you're on the rec, I might, to understand from individual conversations, were good for me to release the rec meeting, last rec meeting that you've been reviewing? Or what do you?
Well, I, I think, probably wanna give a kind of a recap of what we haven't yet.
Yep.
You wanna do it or do you want me to do it?
Well.
They have a public ask. I'm sorry, Tom. I think that they were just talking about, the public is looking for the video. They wanted.
Video that we've held.
Hasn't been posted?
No.
No, because they were reviewing the end.
Back up. You know, just differences, I guess, of opinions.
They were, the, the meeting kind of got off the rails a little bit. Some stuff happened. We were trying to, we, we wanna make sure that the rec is looked in a good light, and we wanted to make sure this wasn't damaging to them. And some of the stuff that was happening was questionable and, but at this point in time, I think we're gonna let it out there just so the people knows what's going on.
And we, we had a good meeting on, on Monday. We came, you know, to try to, you know, help, you know, people learn how to, I guess, conduct a meeting too. You know, everybody's kind of new to what they're doing and, you know, just kind of helping the chair or the rec director, you know, run the meeting better. It helped, you know, like you speak and you're done. Now the next person, instead of everybody talking over each other, you know, those kind of things. So we're, we're just here to try to help them and, and, you know.
So you're all set if I, I'll make something.
Yep.
You know, that, I assume all the committees are using Robert's rules?
I mean, they're, they're trying. They're trying.
You can modify them, but they provide a good structure or how to carry on.
They, we really gotta sit down with that committee. And one thing that I advise them, because, you know, I, I get the phone calls too, is, you know, you, you elect your members, you know, obviously, we've got the director itself, but you still have to have direct people on that committee with some sort of role. Vote on things.
Yeah, voting's a big thing.
You have to vote on things because, you know, when it comes to us and we're like, well, what's the recommendation? And there isn't a recommendation. We just think it's a good idea, you know? We need to make sure that the whole committee is being involved and without having a vote saying, yes, they were involved in that part of it. And so I, I think they gotta structure the meeting a little bit, and, and they're doing a good job. I just, they gotta structure the meeting. And I think by doing that, it'll get, get them, get it down to, so they won't have what we had in that meeting.
And there were just some personalities that the board had to look at first.
Yeah, and at the same time too, is, you know, the personality, some of the stuff that was said during that meeting, they gotta remember that they're on TV. We're all watching them.
Yep.
And, you know, when I, when I do stupid stuff up here, which I do now and then, I do know that camera's on, and then I have to deal with it later on. They've gotta do the same thing. So we can't edit it because everybody wants to see what's going on.
And we shouldn't.
So, we just wanted to make sure before we edit that we were clear that everybody knew why.
Right, because we heard certain things. So the board is obligated to listen to it to make sure that, you know, if somebody was insulted.
There was a lot, and it took a bit to, to listen to it. No.
I went on the web trying to, just looking for documentation on Robert's rules, and I have a cover one off. It's about five pages. It's not all that complex to read through. It's pretty straightforward.
I'll bring one with me to the next meeting.
Exactly. And it would be great to, you know, not the whole thing, but just to cover some of the highlights of, you know, how a meeting should be conducted. And I, I think that would be helpful for them. And if you, if you want a copy of this, you're welcome to it, but there may be a better one out there.
Maybe there's an actual book too, maybe.
I was gonna say, do we have the book?
Just a summary put out by one of the states.
Cliff Notes?
Yeah, Cliff Notes, and.
And we're not gonna be doing Sundays anymore. You know, everybody deserves a Sunday off.
Camera guys and women.
Yeah, the camera guys, and, you know.
It's a woman.
So we're gonna.
I slid that out at the end, Nick, because I knew I was coming.
I'm here for you, Virginia.
Having meetings, you know, at least one during the week. We told her she could do a Saturday, but not every Saturday. You know, because everybody.
Some of them were just three and four hours. And personally, you get exhausted after a while, so.
Yep.
Anytime the board gets some plates, it's important for them to watch them to make sure that no one is insulting.
If they're during the week, I can get to them and help her more, so.
Good. Thank you, Kim. Anything else?
Nope. Schools, schools next week. I'll go to that. Cemetery's not until, actually, that same week. So I'll have a couple things here in a couple of weeks to talk about. Okay. David, turn.
I'm gonna change mine up a little bit so we can talk to you afterward. So code enforcement, we're still working on our land use assistant. Mary Grant, I don't have anything, no updates on. So conservation and forest committee, we have sent out a job description to the members, hoping that they can come together on the next, what's it, the 12th?
12th, yeah.
12th, yeah. I plan on being there.
11th, maybe.
Is it 11th? I thought it was 12th. But I plan on being at that meeting so we can discuss the job description of the town forester and see if there's any changes that the rest of the committee would like to make, you know, make it a committee thing. Because we don't want the forest to make it up his own. You know, we want the whole committee doing that. And roads, road committee, the road committee was Monday, I believe, Monday morning, what, 10 o'clock? Was it 10 o'clock? You guys?
Yes.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, we went to that.
It was actually 10 o'clock.
Yeah, it was 10 o'clock. Had the bridge ranger come down, Jim Foster, Jim. And I was not able to make it because it was actually kind of a last minute thing to me, and I already had something scheduled I couldn't get out of. So Tom and Kim took my place, and you guys wanna speak, what you've come up with?
Sure. I thought it was a great meeting. Mr. Foster, I think, clearly a very knowledgeable person and was able to head, read reports and was familiar with the two bridges that were reviewed. One is the Canal Bridge, and the other is the Hopper Bridge. That may not be the exact, the correct name, but it's the bridge on the Hopper Road that abuts Milton Mills. With regard to the Canal Bridge, there had been suggestions that certain aspects of the bridge report issued by the state, I believe, indicated there may be some safety issues. The, Mr. Foster indicated the bridge is safe. That what, what they often find with those reports is they assess them against the current standards. And the standards change all the time. So you build a bridge two years ago, it's probably not up to the current standards that are published for, for bridges. But he made a very clear statement when asked about it. Is the bridge safe? He said yes. So from my perspective, that closed the issue on that bridge. And, you know, I, I'm not aware of any reason to continue.
Did he mention the guardrails at all?
He did, and he thought they, those were fine.
The speed of the road, because it's, it's not a highway. So for a 35 mile an hour, 40 mile an hour, he said those are plenty fine. Those, there's, there's nothing missing. You've got the right amount and everything, and, and the height is fine for the speed of that road. What else did he say?
By the way, the meeting was taped, so anyone wants to review it, you ought to do that. It was a good meeting, I think.
I learned a lot, yeah.
Questions and discussions with the road committee, and Kim and I had a chance to jump in and.
How about the Hopper Road?
The Hopper Road, interesting. He said he went down and inspected that bridge and had looked at the report, looked, inspected under the bridge. It's not in need of current repair or replacement. Which was interesting, that he, he said the bridge was fine. He says it's gonna need work. It may, it will likely need to be replaced. He says you could do some repairs, but you're just gonna be back in there replacing it. This was, I recall. Replacing it in short order, and he wouldn't recommend doing that. But he said, there's nothing needs to be done right away. What he did suggest is we get somebody out there to sort of dig up the tar on the bridge, expose the cement that is below the tar. The right term, but there must be a cement platform going over there. And dig into that and see if the cement is stable, or whether it's been crumbling or whatever. And that would give you some more information to understand it. But he saw no evidence of a problem from looking below, looking at the footings to the extent he could see them, and looking overhead. So I said, I tried to get a sense, how long do you think? Because, you know, this could be expensive. What could make it particularly expensive is the bank width. If I remember, this, this could have to become a 55-foot bridge.
Right.
Because of the bank width. And you're not gonna get a 55-foot bridge in that area, which means you're gonna have to do something to the road. This could be, when, when it gets replaced, he thought it, it could be rather expensive. And I think it, you know, probably multiple, seven figures would be my guess. So.
You say seven?
Huh?
You say seven figures?
Yeah, I, I think I, I tried to, you know, without pushing him too far, pressing him on some of these things, Kim and I did. But it's gonna be an expensive bridge, because the road is gonna need roadwork. The, New Hampshire should participate in this, and I've got some ideas about how we might be able to move them along that I wanna talk to my fellow selectmen about. And, but I think, I think we ought to begin planning for it in, not in terms of designing it, but I think we need to start putting money away for this. And so we should consider that through this budget cycle, starting to build a reserve for that replacement of that bridge. Personally, I would not wanna bond this bridge. I'd hope we could, given what we have for reserves and what we could put aside for the next four or five years, if we can get that out of it, maybe we could have enough resources to, to cover this.
We put five, $600,000 in the bank.
Yeah, yeah.
And then New Hampshire comes and helps their part, and we get to that million-dollar mark.
And I would say that's the next thing. We need to meet with the selectmen.
You ready to do that? Anyone think about it after the first thing?
Actually, I, I, I know the, the president of the New Hampshire State Senate very well. And he's also the chairman of the Finance Committee for the Senate. And what, the way the road ranger spoke, he said Milton is not gonna pay for that. What they will do is go to the state, and the state will appropriate money. And so I wouldn't mind, I was gonna give him a call. I may be able to find out a little bit about this, their plans to take down the dams. I understand there, there's an interest in taking the dams that they've, somebody had mentioned that there was some disclosure someplace that said New Hampshire was gonna take out the dams on that river. I don't know if it's true or not, but we ought to find out. And I could talk to him about how can we, how can act in, and I think the state, and maybe they can engage Milton, kind of try to move this along so that within a reasonable period, because it takes years to get things out of a state government.
I think, I think the state of New Hampshire, like five years before they get a project through, so.
And if we're dealing with the state, well, I know we had used Mr. Bean in the past, but we really, we weren't. Seems like Wakefield saved money. Did they go through the state?
Because they didn't go through the state.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because.
The presentation he gave, and he was correct.
And I'm just wondering if.
Mr. Edwards, I think his name was. Yeah, Charlie, Charlie.
I guess I'm just thinking, you know, okay, so, I mean, would it be in our best interest to kind of look at both sides of it? Do we get, do we try funding from the state? I mean.
State of New Hampshire?
State of New Hampshire.
It's going to cost us a lot more money to build that if we go through the state stuff, isn't it? I'm just.
Typically, what happens is whenever the state funding involved.
Don't you have to use state?
The job turns into a lot bigger project than, you know, just because everything costs, you know, when the state gets involved. We found that out when we did that project up there, up in, with Wakefield, you know.
So it may not be wise to engage them?
Well, no, I would engage them to see, see whether or not that.
Let them know that there are options, though. I mean, you could go through the state and spend whatever it's going to cost for the state to do it, or we can do it. Your town could raise your money, just like we did with Wakefield, and do it that way. And I don't know which way is better.
I think if you talk to the individual that you're talking about, it might give us a good idea of whether or not it's feasible for us to even wait that long, you know. Because, I mean, they may, he may tell us, hey, you know, there's 100 bridges already ahead of that one, you know, dah 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 dah. Might give us a better perspective on where we sit.
I don't know. If the state of New Hampshire gets involved, my guess is that, I would hope the state of Maine would want to get involved. Now, maybe they don't do these things, but, but, you know, maybe our state senator or rep in the House, you know, why can't you advance a bill to fund for capital? In New Hampshire, they do that, I know. I would think in Maine, too, and if the state's kicking in money from New Hampshire, maybe we get Maine and we get up from underneath this.
I think what the state of Maine does, grants.
Well, okay.
They do grants. I don't think they'll, you know, the state will come down and actually pay. Well, they were going to pay for the West Shore Drive one at one point in time from right here. At one point in time, DOT was, you know, or, I don't know, I think it was DOT, and, but there was so much.
I think the New Hampshire is a grant also, or it may not be a grant.
I don't think it is.
Oh, you don't think so?
No, no. They actually, they've got a bridge program for local, and what they do is, that's why they had to wait so many years for that one over in Milton, between Milton and Lebanon.
Right.
They had to wait for the state to come up with the funds for that.
Okay.
I don't know if they have the match funds or what, but.
Isn't it still down? I don't even think they've done it yet.
I thought they fixed that one.
Maybe they did finally, but.
I know one of them they did.
Because we had, we had the bridge on Fox's Ridge, we had the bridge on Milton Mills Road, and the bridge on Hopper. They've done one. You got one you can drive over.
Is that the one on Milton Mills Road?
No.
I'm talking about the state of Maine.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was talking about.
Well, I meant New Hampshire, too, because, I mean.
That's different. Those are state roads. Those are state roads.
Is that what it is?
The one that I'm talking about is a town, town to town.
Okay.
And so it'd be kind of interesting to see how Lebanon and Milton was able to do that because of state. See how they were able to work that out, because that would be the best example.
The AP in New Hampshire.
Yeah, it was a Milton, town of Milton.
Yeah.
And the town of Lebanon.
Lebanon, yeah.
Okay, whether or not, who took reins and did what, because.
Is that the one that goes over the Three Ponds?
Yeah, by the Camp Road, yeah.
How long ago was it replaced, David?
What's that?
Shut down for years. How long ago was it replaced?
I thought they just did it.
I think they did, because that was closed for years.
Yeah.
I'll get some insight for you.
It was a wooden bridge.
It was an old rickety thing.
Well, he may, he may have no interest in taking this issue up, but I thought I.
Yeah.
Well, it might give us an idea what kind of timeline these things take.
Okay, so we'll do that, and, and maybe this should be referred to the Capital Planning Committee. Or we should think about, where would the initiative come for putting together a warrant for funding reserves for a project like this? Would that come from the selectmen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, so that's something we do.
That would be a road, so the problem is, is really the road committee would be overseeing bridge anyways. You don't need a third party involved.
So can we put that on, on a list of potential warrants for us to take up for the coming year? Okay. Any, any comment on that before we move on? Okay. David, do you have anything else?
I don't.
David, did you, I know I sent it to you late, late, so you might not have seen it. The West Shore Drive, did you want to touch on what Maureen said?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep. So we got an email from Maureen from Ransom, and they're planning on sending on a survey crew to do the GPS work on the actual location, what's there now. Sounds like she's going to have to be, she's going to be getting ahold of Army Corps of Engineers and inland fisheries on some issues, and, yeah, she's working on it.
Yep.
Now, she wasn't touching with DEP?
She was in touch with DEP, yep.
Yep, she says she was finally able to connect.
And that's why she's got to get ahold of the other.
And they basically said they're going to defer to Army Corps?
Yeah.
If I read the note correctly, so it's really just inland fishing and fisheries and Army Corps now? Okay, great. Onto, any other comment before we move on? Okay. Town hall water bid, as I, I think at a last meeting we discussed and perhaps posted, did we not, Jennifer?
We did, Tom and.
Yes, Dunbar Water, Water Bid to put in processing and filtration systems for the town hall. The proposal had detailed in various, various systems they're putting in place. The total cost was $4,300. I think we should take this up tonight, and wondered, any further discussion on this?
Mine, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, me, too.
Any comment before we take a vote on this? Okay.
I would just ask that you, based on some of the fine print in the last one, about a couple of things that might be applicable, that $4,300 within 10%, just in case there's something that K L T needs, I don't have to come back to you.
Forty, so when the motion is, is.
To, yeah, to approve of forty-three.
Not to exceed 110% of 4,300.
Exactly.
Okay. No comment? We have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the water bid from Dunbar Water, Division of Dead River Company, not to exceed, what was it, 110%?
110%. Of 4,300?
Of 4,300, sorry.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Great. So Jennifer, you're going to be in touch with him?
Yep, I'll reach out if you just sign the bottom one.
All right, this is my copy, so.
Okay.
Um.
There we go. All right, so we'll get it signed.
Great. Transfer station trailer box purchase.
So I was expecting Robin to be at tonight's meeting. I don't know, you might know better than I, how important this is as far as timeframe. I will tell you that he was in my office on Monday, and I did physically see the three bids that he got. I only pursued and dealt with the lowest one. He has the other ones on him to present to you. I'm not sure what happened, but.
Should we table that until next week, then?
I mean, that's up to you, or I've got the one he wants, so it's your call. But he does have three bids. I did physically see them, but I'm guessing something maybe with the roads came up.
And that's fine, so.
Want to table it, or?
As I understand it, he had submitted, he had provided you evidence of three bids.
Three written bids, correct?
Three, and so you were able to observe those?
I was able to observe those.
And his recommendation was basically, with who and for how much?
So it's from a company called Container One. It is a 40-foot shipping container. The price is 50, 45.71. However, as a municipality, they'll allow us to do a net 30 days for that 45.71, because I'm leery to just send them that money. However, they said if you want to prepay, they give you a 2% discount, which would bring it down to 44.79.58, savings of $91.42.
Of how much?
$91.42.
I'd rather inspect it and make sure we get what we want.
There's a one-year.
$90, right?
One-year warranty that they sent me as well. It's coming out of Massachusetts, as I understand, or New York, Newark, New Jersey, it's coming out of.
Are they going to deliver it and place it?
Yes.
And is there any cost of, we have one that's being disposed of?
I don't know what he's doing with that one.
I don't believe we're disposing of any containers. We were talking about the compact there. That's what we were talking about. So, no, this one here.
I thought it was replacing one that was, no, I'm not sure. Why don't we table this then until next week? I just want to make sure there isn't.
Yeah.
A disposal cost. I thought it was a replacement of one that was pretty rotten. I had inspected one, and no one should be going inside that. They had wooden floors and they were rotten.
I doubt that has disposal on that. I'm sure that's just delivery.
Well, if anybody disposes of the old one, it's not going to be this company. They're hiring out.
That's my point. There may be a cost to dispose of.
Which would be separate than this.
Yeah, I just want to know what it is, that we got the full cost. So why don't we table this?
Table that, yeah.
Okay, great. Personnel policy?
Okay. So I have a fresh copy for you to sign, but it's going to take a couple of minutes. We're going to go through the actual changes that were made, because there's a couple in here, and a few of your copies from last week. But on page three, the current policy says that signed timesheets should be presented to the treasurer by 12 noon. When Michelle left the town of Acton, and Kayla and I were doing it, we got your permission to change it to 10. It's been 10 ever since. That's worked out better, because you're not waiting and spending half the day waiting for timesheets. So we have, I've checked with Kelly, and we've made that a permanent change to 10 a.m.
So 10 a.m., okay.
No changes on page four. Page five, based on our conversations, number two, the treasurer was listed at 35 hours. It's listed at 40 hours now, and that's primarily to decide how paid time off is earned. So number two has been changed to 40. Okay, number six, page six, I'm sorry. So under health insurance, the third paragraph down, this is what we originally needed to change, saying that new employees are eligible after, following the first month after 60 days. It used to say 90, but that put us in violation. We also removed everything regarding HSA, because we no longer have one. And this is the sentence we've added, based on your motion last week, or the week before. Any employee who is eligible, this is not in there, so, any employee who is eligible for health insurance per this policy and declines coverage, the town of Acton will pay 100% of the plan's offered life insurance for the value of the employee's current yearly salary. Does that sound good?
Yes, it does.
Okay, good. So have that in. And that's it. So with those changes, a fresh copy. I checked with everybody to see if you had anything else, and you didn't.
We'll need a motion to accept the town of Acton personnel policy as written.
Here you go.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
And we'll distribute those and go over them with the employees at that December 7th meeting.
Yep. Have we got an update? Have we got something on the agenda about health insurance? No. Where we're talking about health insurance, the, the health trust that we're looking, that we're moving to also has a disability policy. And there was an interest, in particular in the fire department, I think, but I would think in other areas as well, where we may want to look at a disability policy, understand exactly what the benefits are and the cost, and consider that, so.
That will, we did send the fire department the notices of the December 7th meeting as well. Not so much for the training, as we talked earlier, but so they can see everything that they'll have in front of them as an offer.
But the disability would not be part of that, right?
Well, it's something they offer, whether.
Buy into it.
Yeah, you can buy, we can all buy into it. Now, you guys may decide to cover it for some of those per diems, or however you, or the fire department, but we need to hear all the benefits first, and then we'll present them back to you, and.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'd like to, I'd like to explore that. I don't know about how you feel, but I would consider there being some town contribution to that.
Okay.
Maybe employee contribution as well, some sharing of it.
Now, you're talking for full-time, part-time, and per diem? Do you know?
I think they would just offer full-time, which is probably not going to satisfy everyone's needs, but it may be a place to start, so, but I don't think they offer part-time or per diems, disability, but.
I'll look into it, sure.
You could ask.
I think we, when I talked to you about it, I thought we were going to look in legal, see what we had to do for the per diem. We got to figure out whether or not, what scope, what we cover with, you know, they're kind of mercenaries. They come and go as they want, you know, they're not full-time employees.
No, but they are covered under our workers' comp. I mean, so if they get hurt, we're certainly covered, but not disability.
That has a tie-in to it?
Right, yeah.
I would imagine that.
Subcontractor, you would have to, you know, if they didn't have it, or what it's called, you would have to do that. So we got to kind of get an idea exactly where, what we're responsible for.
Maybe you could, I would imagine there, there may be some fire association that may offer something like this.
To the fire department.
Maybe ask Wayne if he could look into it.
Okay.
Because we might do something different for the fire department.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're in a particularly dangerous environment.
Yeah, I agree, if anybody's going to get disability.
You know, those are, it'd be great to offer them to everyone, but I think in particular to the fire department.
We definitely start there, yeah.
You know, somebody gets hurt, you know, responding to one of our fires, I feel like town ought to be supporting.
I feel the, especially the full, our full-time, we've got to make sure we take care of them. We've got to take care of them all, but we're just going to make sure, there's a lot of per diems, so how do we keep track?
I don't know how that works, but maybe Wayne could sort that out.
All right, we'll put some effort into it.
Okay, great. Rec driveway permit, did you cover that already?
So she indicated, was just indicating that we got it, and I think that once we get to the, the rec really wanted to know what the next step was going to be. We'll just kind of add the lower when we get to the engineer.
Engineer, so.
And new business, we'll cover that, too.
Kind of tie it all together.
All right, we have a facility assessment, RFP bids.
So you actually received two.
Okay.
I'm guessing you're going to want to take these home and study them.
Yeah.
You received one from Bureau Vettis.
Yeah, Vettis, yeah.
And then TRC out of Scarborough. I don't know, the first one's out of, where are they at?
Yeah, they're out of Scarborough, I think.
Yep, I'm trying to see where the other one's out of.
Oh, they're someplace in, out west, Midwest or something, I believe.
This one's local. I thought it was interesting to hit the picture, the town hall picture on that. So I haven't, they both came, so, oh, there's a cost on that one, right off of there.
They are not in New England, this second one, but they do.
Yeah, it looks like they do New Hampshire, New Hampshire.
Yeah, they've got a number of local clients.
But the other one is in Scarborough?
The other one's in Scarborough, and, and, you know, a lot of these are national firms that may be a local office, Scarborough, so. Okay, we'll look them over.
I confused A with G. I was talking about G, that's my old rule.
Yes.
We weren't going to point that out.
I just RFP, and I just.
Okay, York County Sheriff's Department update.
Oh, yeah. So we met yesterday with the Shapley Select Board. It was a good meeting. We came up with pretty much the same conclusion there that, um, sounds like, you know, we pretty much have to sign the contract, put it forward in front of us. We did try to make some changes. Unfortunately, they didn't agree with our changes, came back, deleted our changes. So, and I believe both towns came up with the same conclusion there that, you know, we don't want this to happen again, that if we go through this process again, that it will be different. But at this point in time, I believe that we're going to have to sign this contract as is.
And something to point out is that it's a one-year contract. The sheriff's department changed it from three to one year, so.
Yeah, that was one of the concerns I had, was typically when you sign contracts, especially with large amounts of money, it's nice to know for budgeting reasons and security, knowing that you've got this, this process going forward down the road. For them to only allow us to do a one-year contract was kind of a bummer. And we're not sure what it means, why they're not doing it, but we have some ideas. But at the end of the day, I think what we're going to end up doing is we have to sign this contract, and we've got to start looking at possibly other alternatives, if we need to, not knowing what the sheriff's department role will be in the future.
So we need to take advantage of this year to go through that with Shapley.
Yep.
And try to make some conclusion about, well, if this is all they're going to offer in a contract, is that acceptable to us? If it's not, then what are we going to do about it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, they weren't, most of the, most of the board members over there, I believe, was, was, they weren't very happy with the idea that when you put something in a contract, such as, for instance, we, we felt as a town, both towns felt that, when our deputy sheriff is driving in our, our car, that we should have some sort of log of when it works out of town. Okay, we should have some idea where our car is going. And they completely struck that out of the contract, as if we didn't need to know that information. And we felt, and honestly, that wasn't really a big ask. We asked for a lot bigger stuff, but that was, that was something I thought was easy, okay, we'll just go with it.
The middle.
They just struck it out, they threw everything we wanted out, and we had our lawyer actually go through and add stuff in. They just struck it out, they threw everything we wanted out, and we had our lawyer actually go through and add stuff in there to protect us, and it was just like, we, so, I, I'm, I'm going to vote to sign on this. I'm not happy with the contract at all, but I think we have to at this point, because we're, we're really stuck in, in a situation where, um, we're handcuffed to it, literally.
And the current contract expires in December?
Yeah.
You know, we, um, okay.
All right, well, I'll second that.
Well, we'll prepare.
I was going to say. Okay, we'll get a contract and we'll put it on a future agenda.
Next week.
Yeah, in the month.
So we're going to work with Shapley in the interim and try to come up with some.
Yeah.
Some solution here that can move this along.
I mean, I think they really want to work forward and, and see if we can come up with some ideas and how we can make, make something happen in the future, whether or not it's with York County or maybe some other route. But we, we want to make sure that the town gets the services they're getting now.
Good. Thank you, David. Abatement supplements, Jennifer?
Okay, so we have, um, another wash, quite a, kind of interesting. You remember, remember when I presented you with the houses, the buildings that the assessors found that had no building permits, had no, no assessed value, no history of it? So it was mapped out, we found the owner, we sent the certified letter and everything. Turns out it was the neighbor's property. He's not being assessed for it either, but it wasn't, it wasn't his property. The map plot lines were incorrect, so we have abated, um...
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
Okay.
Could you explain that a little?
Yep, so how the property was plotted on the tax map. Indicated that John Doe owned it, and that's who we sent the naughty letter to. John Doe contacted us and said, "My property line actually ends here, go see Jane next door."
I see, okay.
And we had, um, we had already supplement, we already added the tax to them based on the value. So, uh, the other owner took full responsibility, they're working with codes, but in the meantime, we need to at least abate the man we sent the letter to, and so we are baiting Jeffrey Boyd. That's the abatement, and it clearly says on here that, um, the reason for the abatement, the original tax bill was sent to the wrong one. So that's your abatement. And then the supplement tax bill is going to John Herrick and Mike Adalte.
Riccardi.
I'm sorry?
Riccardi.
Riccardi, okay, looks good.
So we need to sign this?
Yes, so motion to approve the abatement and supplement, there's places for three signatures.
Last question, uh, is, is this the value that was placed on those properties, those buildings?
Yes.
And, um, were there any other fines?
Well, that's through the code office. That's something that your liaison, um, needs to talk to him on how they're, how you're handling that. There should be, but that has nothing to do with the assessor.
So as far as what I know right now is, there was a permit, they did find a permit for one of the buildings. They're still working on the other stuff. I believe there's going to be some other issues, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's forty, forty-three thousand. They were mobile homes that kind of got tacked together or something, right?
Park model with an addition.
Okay.
And a shed, doesn't look like quite a shed.
Not the pictures they were.
Oh, we, did we do a motion on this already?
We need to do a motion?
I need a motion?
No. So could we have a motion on this?
Okay, so what's the abatement? Where's the abatement here?
Let me give this to Kim so she can make the motion.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay.
Okay, so we're going to make a motion to give a tax abatement to Jeffrey Boyd. And then the amount, ch-ch-ch-ch, five hundred and thirteen and forty-six cents?
Yep.
All right.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Takes care of the abatement.
Now, certificate of supplements commitments, we have to do?
Yep.
Okay, now.
You can supplement, you can just say the amount and the property owner.
Okay. I didn't bring my glasses. Give me a minute.
Supplement will be the same amount, five thirteen forty-six?
All right. The supplement is five thirteen forty-six.
The owner's a map, two thirty-nine lot ten.
Two thirty-nine lot ten.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Can I take care of both of those? Whatever those things are? Certification.
One's a commitment and one's the assessor. Okay, but they go together, right?
They go in the tax commitment book for formal record.
Swear.
They're not here. It's a blind leading the blind tonight.
That's those on the day, but you should be able to see them.
Okay, good. So is their reval going well, Jennifer?
Yes, all the field work, as I understand it, is done. They're working on, um, all the fun stuff now, paperwork, numbers, and this month we'll be setting up meetings and sending out letters and.
So that will be announcing to people what their assessed value is?
Yes, yes.
When will those be going out?
Uh, I'm thinking February-ish.
Okay. All right, it'll be fun.
We have to make a motion on those?
Yep. Okay. All set? Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Are we moving on?
What's that?
Oh, I didn't know if he called for the next item.
Oh, okay, well, I'll let you do the next item first.
What is this?
That's for the next one.
Oh, okay.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Okay, Deputy Fire Chief appointments.
Okay, we've got appointments here. Make a motion, we appoint Rick Smith, and I think they're both the same date, yep. Adam Small is Deputy Fire Chiefs, till eleven, one, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Jennifer, you want to talk about the emergency closure while we're signing this?
Yes, so I printed off copies. I just thought it was a good time, since we haven't looked at it since, uh, two thousand and twenty, just to see if anybody had any issues with it. But essentially, the municipal officers and transfer station may be closed in the event of weather or other public emergencies. Every attempt will be made to service the town's people of Acton while keeping the safety of the employees in mind. So during extreme weather conditions, the town administrator will consult with a road commissioner about the road conditions. Town administrator will then decide whether a delay of the opening or to close town services. The Board of Sluckman, Transfer Station Superintendent, and Department heads will be notified of the decision immediately. Whenever possible, a decision will be made two hours before the opening of services. Employees who are scheduled to work will be notified of the delay or closure by their immediate supervisor. Employees should be directed, uh, should direct questions or concerns to them. Town administrator will make every attempt to notify the public of the emergency closing. Methods will be used, the town's website, local news stations, social media, and Acton's local cable television. The board recognizes, depending on the emergency, all these methods of notifying the public may not always be available, and residents are encouraged to call ahead and inform weather conditions. So essentially, I call the road commissioner, we alternate between them, they tell me how the roads are and if we should be open or closed.
Okay.
We don't need, there's no changes?
No, just, uh, just make sure, thank you for that. Poll permit.
This one's on Godding Road.
These are my favorites.
So this is, no, this is one on Godding Road, um, we did have a conversation before, and I'll do a little digging on, as to whether or not, as a municipal officer, the road commissioners could possibly do these? Let me look into legal, but for now, you got that one, Tom.
Okay.
The only issue I think we'd have is because we're given the right for them to place polls in the town right away. So probably will end up coming back saying, because we're kind of responsible for the road commissioners.
I know that the town clerk, poll permits are one of the things that are never allowed to be destroyed, so not anything on these road commissioners, but if I don't have them in that book.
I think that what we should be doing, though, is, I know when I was road commissioner, when I get those, I'd actually go up to the spot to make sure that where the polls go and it's not going to affect my job.
I do forward them to the road commissioner.
But we ought to have a recommendation from them.
Oh, okay.
Before we sign. What if they put in a poll and they didn't get approval?
The board can, just like the fence that you could have done, you could have made it, you can have them remove it if it's in your right of way.
Take the polls down on Nason Road. Now, if I was the road commissioner, I'm saying anything, it's, well, but I would have put a fuss up against that, because that, they put it right in the ditch line, against the rock wall, where I got to push my snow. Uh, they, they could have done something different there to make it a little bit more, um, town-friendly, but.
You want to try to get approval on, from the road commissioner before it goes, goes on your agenda?
I think we, we, let's just get this one, it was technicality, and I think from now on, we start thinking of some other way of making sure that we're doing this correctly.
So you have a book on all these?
Yes, way back.
Yeah, great.
Big binder. Want to have a look at?
I do.
So we're going to make a motion, um, to accept the application, poll location or underground location. And it says, Godding Road, poll thirty, Godding Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. We have a new poll.
Well, they could be replaced on a poll too.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah. I'm just throwing it on.
Where do we, just to. Yeah, I think you're right.
Well, it looks like it, all right.
Okay.
Try.
Why don't we hold for the next item until David's got a chance to sign this? Actually, Jennifer? You have drafted a RFP for civil engineering?
I'm not sure if I want to take ownership of it.
No, that's fine. Well, I appreciate you doing it, so. The point is, we have something to review.
Yes, you do. I drafted a, um, civil engineer RFP with the help of my friend, Mr. Google. I thought it came out fairly nicely, but, um, it's been emailed to all of you, so you can take a look at it. I'm going to go through it.
For our next meeting?
Yeah, just in case you rewrite it completely.
Okay. So they would be engaged, first project probably the rec.
So that's why I said G here would kind of deal with, uh, what we were talking about with the, um, the driveway permit for the rec field.
The gym, the transfer station, right, all those things?
I think right now, at this point, I think we start first with the rec field. This is something we've really got to get rolling. This year, we haven't even come up with any idea what we want to do yet, so, um, so now that we're taking these projects now, and we're, we're going to bid them out, I feel that really the only way to do it fairly, so you don't have so many different opinions on what's going to be done, you actually have, have an engineer go in, this is, this is your elevation, this is what you're going to be doing, da-da-da-da-da, everybody comes in with the same, they're on the, all the same page, and, um, and we, we have something we can actually send out as an RFP, because it's already made up for us.
Good. That's great, thank you. Looks like we're ready for an executive session, but why don't we, uh, go to public comment before that? Any public comment? Okay.
Tom, if I can just clarify, I think we, we said the warrant of finance was on the twelfth, but that's the Monday that capital improvement conservation law, and Dennis pointed out, his is the Tuesday. So warrant of finance is actually on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Yeah, so just not to mix anybody up. And then we had too many things on the twelfth, that didn't sound right.
Is that six o'clock? Okay, yes. Great, thank you. Now, we're going into an executive session for a personnel matter. We're coming out, and there may be an action by the board when we come back out, so, uh, regarding that action, that item. So, we have a.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, personnel, four oh five, six A dash one.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're back.
And I'm going to make a motion that we come out of executive session, personnel, four oh five, six A dash one.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right. So land use assistant, is that the next thing we're going to?
Yes.
All right. Well, we've, uh, had several different applicants, and, um, I think we've finally, um, chosen somebody. And let's see here, so he'd be the land use assistant, his name is David Riley. He'll be starting at twenty-two dollars an hour, and it'll be thirty-five to forty weeks, forty hours per week. And, uh...
Effective tomorrow.
Effective tomorrow, he's going to come, uh, meet the planning board and kind of get associated with them. This was, uh, somebody Jason was happy with, you know, his choice, and so hopefully this, um, works out, and, and.
He's got some great experience, good education, comes with very good references. From what we understand from his prior employer. Thought very highly of him, so I think, I think we got, and of course, Jason is, uh, this is Jason's pick, and we all concur.